Good morning, Lampton County Council, staff, members of the public, media joining us in person and online. I'd ask Ms. Legay to take the roll call, please.
Thanks, Warden. Deputy Warden Agar. Counselor McEwen for Counselor Atkinson. Counselor Bushy. Counselor Bradley.
Here.
Counselor Broad. Counselor Case. Counselor Cook. Counselor Dennis. Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Hand. Counselor Lucie. Counselor McRoberts. Counselor Miller.
Present.
Counselor Sageman.
Present.
Counselor Veen.
Present.
Counselor White. Counselor Ferguson.
Present.
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 Warden Marriott. Warden Marriott. We have Coram. We have Coram.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odawa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaab. Odawa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaab. It is through the connection of the Anishinaab with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize your unique cultures, It is through the connection of the Anishinaab with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize your unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. protecting the future for those generations to come. I would ask any member of council to declare our pecuniary interest now or anytime during the meeting. Counselor Lucie. I would ask any member of council to declare our pecuniary interest now or anytime during the meeting. Counselor Lucie.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I do have one 3AA EMS department during our closed meeting, and I will leave the room. Thank you, Warden Marriott. I do have one 3AA EMS department during our closed meeting, and I will leave the room.
Thank you. Are there any others? Thank you. Are there any others? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to go in camera for the reasons noted in the agenda. Seeing none, I would look for a motion to go in camera for the reasons noted in the agenda. Counselor Lucie and Counselor Hand, seconds, all in favor. That's carried. Go meet in Committee Room 3. Counselor Lucie and Counselor Hand, seconds, all in favor. That's carried. Go meet in Committee Room 3.
Welcome back. Please join me for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I would ask Ms. Legay to rise and report from in camera, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I can report that Lampton County Council met in camera this morning for approximately forty minutes to address a number of matters, first being to review and approve the county council close session minutes of April 3, 2025. Secondly, to receive a report and provide instructions related to negotiations between the county and a third party regarding potential litigation, to receive a report and provide instructions regarding lease negotiations for an EMS facility between the county and a third party, to receive a report regarding the potential disposition of property located in the city of Sarnia, to consider and provide instructions pertaining to an identifiable individual, and then lastly, to review and approve the committee of the whole close session minutes from April 16, 2025. That included receiving a report and providing instructions regarding negotiations between the county and a third party related to potential litigation.
Thank you, Ms. Legay. Item number nine, delegations. I'd look for a motion to invite delegations within the bar to speak to county council, Councillor Dennis and Councillor Loosley, all in favor. That's carried. First presenter is Matthew Slotwinski, Chief Executive Officer, Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership, will be speaking to county council, providing an update regarding the US tariff local impacts. Welcome, Matthew.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I'm glad to be here today to provide some insights on tariffs and international trade and the impacts on the economy of Sarnia-Lampton. Last time I spoke to council, a couple of months ago, we were about a week into a changing trade landscape with the United States. Until about a month ago, the targets and arrows, they kept changing, resulting in incredible uncertainty and instability that's somewhat stabilized since mid-April. To start, I'd like to share a little bit of data to help set a tone in terms of scale, movement, and industry. While the number on the screen, they account for international trade of all types, not just trade with the United States, I think it's worth noting that ninety-four percent of Lampton's exports went to the United States and seventy-one percent of our imports came from the United States. The big takeaway is that both imports and export figures are large, with manufacturing related to our chemicals operations dominating both product in and product out, and the wholesale trade industry also contributing a major amount to those figures that are presented. Please recognize that we do have far more importing establishments than we do exporting establishments within the area. establishments within the area, and this is important as import tariffs are just as important in terms of trade as those related to exports. In total, we do about three point seven billion dollars of trade with the United States out of Lampton County, involving one hundred and eighty-nine establishments exporting two point nine billion dollars, and four hundred and forty-two establishments importing seven hundred and eighty million. And many of these operations are small, especially represented by those in the one to nine employer range, ten to forty-nine employer range, but of course, again, the majority of the trade is related to exports related to our largest employers, who are those in the chemical industry. It's important to recognize the reality of existing tariffs in effect for Canada via the United States, noting, of course, that these can change at any time, as we've seen. But for now, we know that there is a twenty-five percent tariff on automobiles excluding Kuzma compliant auto parts, a twenty-five percent tariff on steel and aluminum, ten percent on energy and potash, and twenty-five percent on any items that aren't compliant with Kuzma. Luckily, over ninety percent of Canadian exports are eligible for no tariffs, and ninety-eight point four percent of Canadian products enter the United States duty-free at this time. But for the percentage that are impacted, it is notably a big deal on those businesses. And an example we heard last night during our trade forum was related to things like the export of live hogs, for example. But based on the meeting with the White House that happened yesterday, there doesn't appear to be any immediately imminent changes, especially related to Kuzma and the existing tariffs associated with it. With tariffs and international trade in mind, the Economic Partnership's been working as a stakeholder, as part of the Lampton Business Collaborative, to develop and implement programming and resources, information sharing, and a line of advocacy efforts. The LBC brings together stakeholders from Sarnia-Lampton's economic development ecosystem with the purpose of promoting collaboration between members to address community issues related to the business environment of the county. Given the potential for local impacts via international trade, that's really been the focus over the last couple of months. Last month, we held two events to keep local businesses and industry informed, and yesterday, we held the Sarnia-Lampton Business Forum on Tariff Impacts, which brought together business representatives from many of our local industries across Lampton County. This was an opportunity to learn about the challenges and needs and to understand what we can do, develop, or advocate for, for the betterment of local businesses and industry. A report from this forum is in development right now and will be available in the near future. In an effort to ensure accessibility, up-to-date, and relevant information, SLEP has developed a dedicated webpage to trade and tariff-related resources. This page is constantly updated to provide the most relevant news, supporting programs, and resources. Some of the information that's available includes things like how tariff impacts Sarnia-Lampton businesses, understanding Kuzma compliance, what incentives are available, how key partners, what key partner resources exist for businesses, importers, exporters, and related, and how to support Sarnia-Lampton-made, Ontario-made, and Canadian-made. As global trade policies evolve, businesses in Sarnia-Lampton are facing new challenges and definitely economic uncertainties, and SLEP is committed to supporting our local business community to provide guidance, resources, and connections to help navigate these developments. There's also significant resourcing that's available to businesses through our business retention and expansion programming that SLEP offers businesses throughout Lampton County. This programming seeks to go beyond just learning about the impacts of international trade, rather seeks to develop out long-term relationships with local businesses so that they're comfortable sharing all of their businesses' concerns, challenges, and opportunities. This is a direct and hands-on approach to business support. And for municipalities where there are lower-tier economic development officers, we do seek to work collaboratively on joint BRNE programming and, most importantly, information sharing. So what are we hearing to date? Uncertainty is putting new projects, investment, and growth of business of all types on hold for local businesses. There's incredible concern about increased costs. Some customers of local businesses may not be considering Canadian products or services, and this is reducing demand locally. For some sectors, there has been a modification of practices based on consumer requests. So this is where consumers may be saying, "We don't want US products, even if they aren't tariffed currently." Many local companies are taking steps to mitigate the impact of potential and even unrealized changes associated with US trade policy. This comes mostly in the form of supply chain modification and the domestication of customers, as examples. A select number of local facilities, unfortunately, have recently shut down and a few who have placed planned reinvestment and diversification projects on hold. While tariffs and international trade are certainly a factor, what I do want to emphasize is they have not been the primary factor. And lastly, tariffs on China are actually impacting Canadian businesses who purchase items via the United States, where there may be these components. Now, there is an opportunity to look to markets, and I think this needs to be noted. It can be taken advantage of by local industry. Businesses can access the markets of over fifty nations across the world due to Canada's fifteen free trade agreements that exist outside of Kuzma, and SLEP can assist in providing resourcing related to this. As it relates to an impact on investment attraction, we have seen a reduction in investment opportunities in some key sectors, and examples the EV and battery supply chain, for example. However, I do need to note that not all opportunities in these sectors have ceased. They do continue to trickle in, so there is, there is opportunity. And we are experiencing a noted shift in foreign prospects based on their origin of opportunity, as a high number of site selection prospects are originating now out of Europe and Asia, more so than the United States at this point in time. And this is somewhat a result of European companies continuing to have interest in North American markets but shying away from US-based instability and US-based supply chains. Our investment attraction pipeline continues to identify projects at a rather positive rate at this point in time, noting, however, that we can expect less companies to enter that pipeline. And at the same time, some companies that were already in the pipeline and moving through it over a period of months and sometimes years have pushed pause. Unfortunately, some have canceled their projects, and others have initiated a reassessment of those projects. But we are still seeing opportunities, what I want to really emphasize. All of the above is related to uncertainty, and uncertainty, it slows opportunity. But I'd rather intentionally say it slows it, it doesn't kill it. And this is because we can leverage uncertainty to create pathways to opportunities. We want to be proactive in identifying what companies are going to, what they're looking to do in this changing international landscape so we can drive opportunity locally. For example, Canada's focus on energy security will drive new investment. It could be in the form of ethanol, biodiesel, energy products, or hydrogen development. Bring it out of the United States, where we've been import-heavy. The previously noted supply chain and customer portfolio diversification and domestication will create a need for regional offices and locations for, and Canadian locations of European entities that have been serving North America via the United States. So bring in that opportunity to Canada. Aligned with Canada's commitment to clean tech and the related uncertainty of the US government's support of the sector, positions Canada as a prime destination for foreign investment. Aligned with our strengths in the areas noted on your screen, we can grow through collaboration with partner countries and really drive innovation, especially with noted things like R and D. My last two slides, rather quickly. I want to emphasize we're heavily engaged with local, provincial, and federal partners to learn from stakeholder needs, to identify and communicate available resourcing, incentives, and programming, and especially to advocate for political action that will minimize the impacts on local industry and create positive opportunity, especially through the reduction of uncertainty and instability. Lastly, there are several new resources and longstanding programs that have heightened importance due to their relationship to international trade, and only a select few appear on the screen here. SLEP is here to help provide assistance, advice, connections, and review, as well as advocate for successful project outcomes locally as it related, relates to these and the assortment of other programs that are available for businesses and industry locally. So I'll stop there and certainly happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions? Deputy Ward Nagar, please.
Thanks, Matthew. Good report. Just back to the tariff part. As you know, I have a fertilizer plant in my vicinity. Is that, is that the same type of application for tariffs as like an oil refinery, or is it in a different kind of class?
I, I would have to look specifically at the exact codes to be able to provide you an answer to that. One of the things I would really like to emphasize, though, you know, oil refineries, for example. One of the nice things, and there's a refinery in St. Clair Township as well, is that those particular operations are mainly positioned to supply to domestic markets, and to this point have been a little insulated from the tariff situation, which is a positive. At the same time, industries like CF certainly do have some uncertainty as it relates to the product that's coming out of it. And this is where we're seeing those large international players. They're looking at the long-term outcomes, how they can shift their customer base, perhaps utilize existing facilities out of the US and supply their, their customers out of Canada, who were taking on from, let's say, the US entities.
Follow-up? Anybody else? Anybody online? No, that's it. Matthew, thank you again for your very informative presentation, and I know there will likely be more to come.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Our second presenter is Mark Perrin, the Executive Director, Tourism Sarnia-Lampton, known as TSL, will be speaking and providing an update regarding current tourism attraction marketing efforts. Welcome, Mark.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us here today, Tourism Sarnia-Lampton. Going to present just where we're at from a marketing and overall kind of a data-informed decision-making, how we make our marketing decisions, and what kind of we're targeting as we continue to kind of navigate different changes that we've experienced throughout the industry. Overall, for our marketing decisions, obviously, we take in lots of data. We work closely with a lot of our industry partners, Tourism Industry of Ontario, Destination, Destination Ontario, the Ministry, SWATC, which is Ontario's Southwest Tourism Corporation, looking federal bridge, looking at different stats, different results, month-to-month basis, then lots of our other partners in tourism on what they're doing, what the shift is, what our conversations are with other DMOs, and collaborating on best strengths, best practices, and how we can continue working together while seeing what trends are happening throughout the different marketing channels, media channels, and collaboration opportunities. We've seen lots of headlines throughout March and April, and most of the headlines coming out are actually in the positive form. And we see this basically how we can shift, how we can focus our marketing efforts to, to be attracting more Canadian tourism opportunities, and then seeing, monitoring where the US travel is. So we're, we're fortunate right now that we're looking like it's going to be a good year. And kind of following up on that, so Destination Ontario recently released a report. They worked with the Content Research Group to partner with Destination Ontario. This was a perception study to see where perceptions have gone. Objectives are essentially to see the impact in recent domestic and international political events, and what those perceptions of Canada and Ontario travel is like as a destination, see the shifts and in the destination and brand perceptions, the metrics, see what barriers, as well as see on a potential impact to, to Canada and Ontario. So from this report, the study of the first wave was conducted in late January, so getting good recent data, as well as the second wave being in late March to see essentially how things have shifted through the US kind of trade, trade and tariff discussions. So overall, just to kind of summarize, that perceptions of Ontario remain steady amongst this ongoing political discourse. We can see a few slight changes in, in the results from Ontario as a, as a travel destination. Pretty well the ones to point out, you know, we have seen some very slight changes, but a politically neutral destination is something we're keeping an eye on, as we can see that it dropped by four points. In continuing through the report, the expectation around Canada as a welcoming nation has been a major shift. This is something that we're focused on in our marketing messages, especially to the US market, on being inclusive and making sure they're still welcoming to, to here. In the first chart, you can see other countries in comparison to these perceptions, and Canada, since that time of January to March, has dropped almost fifteen percent as being a welcoming nation. With this, as a feeling of welcoming perception, has dropped almost twenty, well, twenty-one percent in the, in the report, and knocked us down from first to fourth in the, in the rankings among other countries. Overall, though, when we look at the intentions for US travel, we see in the next twelve months that with Wave One and Wave Two findings, we have no significant drops for the intention to travel to Canada and Ontario. So from a perception standpoint, we know the US market overall will monitor the feeling of welcomeness and inclusiveness, will do messaging that targets those kind of feelings and decision-making materials, as well as see what we can do to increase, go over and above on those perceptions. But with travel intentions holding steady, we know US is still a market that we want to be promoting, marketing, and advertising to, to essentially still attract those US visitors. So overall, from an opportunity standpoint, as we shift, you know, this year and beyond, we're seeing right now that overall for Sarnia-Lampton, we're sitting at about a two percent drop in border crossings from US travel. From the Canadian side, though, we are seeing about a thirty percent drop in Canadians going to the US. So we see those as major opportunities, especially with that drive market. We're going to emphasize the ease of travel, how things are straightforward, obviously, the key drivers for visitation, and then our marketing efforts with reinforcing that we're welcoming and a welcoming Sarnia-Lampton. So with that, our marketing strengths. So for some time now, really since two thousand and twenty-one, we've really seen that these marketing strengths, we've been building on them, we've been really promoting heavy in the GTA marketplace, and our data and trends all show that we're having great success. This is your short-distance interprovincial, also known as a staycation, those, those targeting markets. Number two for us is the longer-distance interprovincial travelers. So basically, you're looking at the, the, just a little further than the GTA area, and then the short-drive United States travelers. So this would be your New York, Ohio, Indiana, and obviously Michigan, Illinois, those, those types of areas that, you know, are roughly within a four- to five-hour in less drive. In recapping some of our numbers from two thousand and twenty-four, we had one point four million Canadian visitor trips, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand US visitor trips, and the average was two point two nights. And then how we, how we market to attract those visitor numbers, five of our major marketing partnerships are with Horizon Travel Lifestyle Partnership, the Global Heroes Print Advertising Partnership, the Global Heroes Video Partnership, Canadian Travel Print Digital Partnership, and Destination Ontario Marketing Partnerships. So as you can see, we work with lots of different marketing partners on how we target and meet our goals. Here are some examples of our advertising partnerships in the Greater Toronto Area, so using a lot of the major video components and advertising messaging boards throughout the, the GTA area. Across southwest Ontario, also provincial, and some reach across Canada are through these different media outlets. So we work very consistently with Globe and Mail, Toronto Star, National Post, Horizons, Cottage Life, YES, Outdoor Network, Course, Bravo, CHCH, Bell Media, Destination Ontario, and Global Heroes. I want to also include in there all the social channels. So we, we're very present on a lot of the social channels, doing content marketing, influencers, boosting ads. marketing, influencers, boosting ads, and targeting kind of the latest trends on how we can stay at the top of relevancy throughout the industry. And then just continuing some of our travel and partnerships also throughout kind of the southwestern Ontario corridor, as well as our distribution partnerships with our travel guide and marketing materials. Overall, I'll kind of speed up just with a couple minutes left in time, but you can see the monthly averages, as well as the top cities in Ontario that we are experiencing in Sarnia Lampton. And then, as well as the US, where visitors are coming from, top three states, Michigan, Ohio, New York, as well as top cities that are coming to Sarnia Lampton as well. Really want to point out the stats from 2024. 2024 in comparison to other southwestern Ontario regions, we had a very strong year in hotel occupancy. Occupancy for us was up 9.3% from 2023 to 24, RevPAR up 11.9%, and overall revenue up 10% from the following year. So building upon those numbers, but in comparison to the region, definitely strong numbers to point out. And then further, we have first quarter results from this year, where we can see revenue has actually increased 13.3%, and demand for hotel rooms in our region has increased 8.7%. So as we move forward to the future, we're continuing to stay up to date with all the recent trends via our partners, working together in lots of collaborations. I think as the tourism industry shifts, there's been a really competitive motion, and that's something where we want to compete as strong as we can, want to compete with more partnerships, with more collaborations, but compete for visitors to come to our area. With that, it's a bit of taking what we already have for strengths in our area and working with them to ensure that they can continue to operate and host different attractions and events, as well as looking at new opportunities to bring into the area for new attractions. And then, as well as infrastructure, infrastructure continues to be a major player in tourism. People are looking for what new attractions, what new attraction drivers there are, and how we can market and position. Essentially, we can market, promote, and advertise anything throughout the county, but we definitely need those new drivers and new things that we can continue to do our part with and have, you know, we can be the doer, but we need obviously the support in making it happen. So, thank you. Any questions? Happy to answer.
Thank you, Mark. Counselor Case, and then Counselor Hand, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, to Mr. Perrin. Mr. Perrin, when we were going through the budget process here, I actually made a request that TSL get out amongst the county, teach municipality, and present something like you did today. It was very informative, and I appreciate it. How is that going? Have we started that process of visiting each municipality in Lampton County? Because there is tourism, even some of the municipalities, you may think there's not a lot of tourism. There actually is. Have you started that process to get around each municipality and to maybe present something like this? That's my question, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Mark, please.
Thank you. And yes, we have. So we're looking at the fall timing right now. Currently, with some of our collaborative, so we are part of the New Lampton Collaborative, so that is a weekly meeting, just talking more openly. It's something that's followed up really from COVID that we've done. But for direct, looking at municipalities, basically, we're getting into the busy season, obviously, on what we do with tourism here, but looking at the fall to have some of those early results and share those with each municipality.
Okay, Counselor Hand, and then Counselor Dennis.
Mark, I just had a question about the results of this first quarter, the increase. Have you targeted or have you the information on where these people are coming from? Because I don't think they're coming from the US unless I'm, because based on car traffic is down across the bridge, trucks are up, cars are down. So is this Canadians coming? You know, thank you.
For a question. Yes, so we're seeing that it's generally that southwestern Ontario and GTA area that we're attracting. A lot of those numbers are also coming from, we had really strong Silver Stick beginning of the year, so Silver Stick plays into a large part. So, and it's something, just mentioning, one of our main target strengths, and you know, it's somewhat part of where we're at for the economy, is looking further developing our minor sports programs across all municipalities. And with that, you know, minor sports is something that we see as it's somewhat our bread and butter in Sarnia Lampton, obviously, with some of the tournaments, and working to bring more and more tournaments there. From a recession standpoint, if we're teetering or looking at the economic times, we know that no matter what for tourism, if little Johnny needs to play to his sport, that mom and dad are going to find the resources to make that happen. And that's a strength we're working on right now. We're setting up a meeting shortly with local organizations and trying to encourage more tournaments in our region for youth and minor sports across the board.
Counselor Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor Ward. Thank you, Mayor Marriott. To Mr. Perrin. Mark, we've been fortunate to have the Silver Stick tournament for a long period of time, and the economic spinoffs have been enormous, and no argument there. You're an aggressive person, and obviously, aggressive salespeople are very, very, tend to be very successful. There obviously, or there must be, you'd see it, other municipalities that would be aggressive also, and surely there would be other municipalities that would love, just love to land a Silver Stick of their own. And I believe you and I were talking not too long ago, and you had mentioned to me that Oakville was eyeing up our Silver Stick. And in some cases, these municipalities are lowering some very, very, some very, very favorable ice fees in order to get them to move. Because, again, they understand the spinoffs in terms of hotels and restaurants and shopping in their communities. Would you like to comment on that, please?
Mark, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dennis, for the comments. And yeah, on that, kind of going back to, you know, the competing, I think right now in the tourism market and landscape, we're seeing the competition as fierce as ever. You know, there's reports essentially saying that the OMA Group, which is the Hotels Motels Association, has made the comment that, you know, if you aren't essentially in MAT programs, which, you know, fortunately, we are with Sarnia and Point Edward, but if you're not in that, you shouldn't be in the tourism business. They've been that strong on kind of advocating, because these MAT dollars are essentially being used as competitive advantages to attract different events and more or less pull away from other areas, and using it as incentives. We have seen a bit with Silver Stick. You know, there are active facilities that are brand-new facilities in southwestern Ontario and in the GTA that essentially are, you know, being very competitive and saying, hey, we'll incentivize, you know, we'll lower ice rates, and we'll work with you if you bring your tournament to our municipality. So it is, it's really rolling up your sleeves and getting in and being, you know, being aggressive. We're going to have to compete hard to not only keep what we have here, but also attract more. And, you know, it's a challenge that is really growing. And, you know, I think from the municipality end, whatever we can do to, you know, see what opportunities for new infrastructure down the road and new opportunities, and working to continue to compete with these other regions are going to be very important in continuing to attract tourists, and obviously the economic impacts and growth that tourism brings to a region.
Thank you, Mark. Counselor McRoberts, please, and then Counselor White.
Thank you, through the chair. As I sat at my last meeting, the only meeting I've made for tourism, I mentioned about businesses, and I would like to encourage that while Mark and his team are pushing it out to the rest of the world about Lampton County, that our businesses really have to provide something here that we're pushing. So when we visit Ireland, it's because there's a package deal that we're getting, where here, every business is kind of fighting on its own to put something out once they drive visitors. We need the businesses to come together and present to the board at the tourism to say, here's what we've got to offer, deals, or tours, or start in Sarnia, end up out in Oil Springs, and then go to Petroleum. We need to work together. So I urge the mayors, I would love to take this deal on, please get your businesses in contact with the chamber, myself, or the tourism board, and let's start creating our own packages and driving our own future. We have to give people a reason to come here, other than the beautiful beaches and the rivers. Like, we need to drive this. So please have your businesses reach out so that we can plan our own future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor White.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Mr. Perrin, for your presentation. I have two questions for you. The first one is centered around something that you referenced there when you were talking about your advertising opportunities, and you specifically identified influencers as an area that you're now working in. And just to set the stage for folks that aren't aware, just whether it's social media platforms like Instagram or TikTok, there are more regional-based folks who develop a following, maybe 10,000 or more, and they tend to do these little, for example, little driving tours and take videos of themselves, you know, eating donuts or sandwiches or visiting beaches and things like that. And they tend to drive a lot of, I would say, that drive-in, that drive-area day trip type of audience. I just, I would like you to just expand on that, because that just, that caught me as an interesting way for you to reach people, because you can reach thousands of people within driving distance. So what do those partnerships look like for you? Are you paying influencers to come to Sarnia? How are you choosing what they identify as worthy of their time?
Thanks, Mr. White. Yeah, so definitely influencers are one of the top new trends. It has been, we've been doing it probably, this is, you know, going into year three or four with some of our influencers. One of the tricky parts of influencers is a lot of them want to own their own content. And essentially, our job is how we extract that content for other purposes, so we're not paying, you know, for a one-time kind of essentially being posted and being on a story for stories last 24 hours on social. So you want, obviously, as much longevity out of what we're doing in partnership. But with the collaborations, most of our influencers actually come through SWATC, so the southwestern Ontario Tourism Corporation. They have composed a database. We've used that database to now have our own database as well. But essentially, what we try to do is partner on a greater kind of southwestern Ontario initiative featuring our Sarnia Lampton area. We've had great success actually in Lampton Shores with this. We've done influencers the last three years, definitely in that, around kind of the beach season and what's going on. And yeah, it's something that obviously continues to grow. But the part, like I said, that's kind of, you know, that we're really looking at is the value. Influencers, the cost continues to skyrocket on these influencers, wanting thousands of dollars for this content. So it's how we can repurpose the content, partner with other parties to obviously be budget-conscious on, you know, if three or four of us are putting together, it works better. Currently, right now, I know Adam's here in our audience, and he's working with SWATC and Windsor and us, all working collaborative on an influencer as well. So there's different collaborations that way, where we can partner DMOs together and then drive the message that way as well. So, yeah.
Okay, last call for questions.
Yeah, second question.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor White.
Thank you, Warden. In terms of, I think I asked this question of Adam Vean when he was presenting last time, but I just want to drill down a little bit with you again. Are you identifying events, even to Counselor McRoberts's point, the business opportunities? But I really want to think about events. You know, Silver Stick comes up a lot, hockey is important, obviously, it drives a fair dollar value to our community. But are you looking around the community, or what efforts are you putting forth to look around the community, to identify unique events that are being driven by grassroots organizations or even neighbors in neighborhoods that are putting on single-day, weekend-type of events that could benefit from your expertise, your advertising dollars, and your leadership?
Thanks again. So absolutely, events, you know, having that driver of attraction is so important. Obviously, you know, people are looking for things to do when they're deciding where to go and where to spend their dollars. And on a whole, it's really looking at how we're building out local versus tourism. And, you know, what we want to encourage is more local events, to think about advertising outside of Lampton County. Essentially, that's what we're doing. That's what we want to partner with. That's how we're driving that economic impact to the region. And taking kind of what's maybe a traditional local event and saying, okay, have you thought of how we can market this outside? So we are actively doing that with many events. On kind of the, I'll say, on the sporting side, we've specifically drilled into that, where right now, we're compiling basically a database of all local organizations, a tournament package, tournament support, and how, not necessarily financially, we support the tournaments, but how we can offset maybe other costs, or work with municipalities on offsetting other costs to attract these tournaments to happen. And then, from a national standpoint, I was out in Calgary at the Sports Tourism Conference meeting with lots of national sporting organizations. There's lots of opportunity. I think Sarnia Lampton, we're well-positioned. Having just hosted the World Under 17 really put us on the map. In a quick turnaround, we were able to do that tournament in less than six months, from getting it to executing it. It's grown our relationship with Hockey Canada for a future national event down the road potentially, as well as looking, great meetings with Lacrosse Canada, baseball Canada, and some other organizations, too. So I think there's a lot in the pipeline. We're looking, you know, we do have the, we have a golf mid-amateur championship happening here in June at the Sarnia Golf and Curling Club. So that's one we're supporting. And yeah, looking at what other opportunities, both kind of on a national, on a provincial, and on the local level, because we know that those areas in tourism, especially in these economic times, are key and going to be sustainable for the future.
Any other questions? We should move on soon, but if there's room for one more, seeing none, thank you again, Mark, for your presentation. That moves us to item number 10, minutes of council of April 3. Look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Cook and Deputy Mayor, Deputy Warden Agar, all in favor. That's carried. Number 11, I invite Dr. Duick forward, please. So under Board of Health, we have one correspondence to receive and file. If there's no questions, Counselor Case moves. Counselor Vean seconds. All in favor. That's carried. And B, Board of Health Information Reports, we have three items there. Look for a motion to receive and file as well. Counselor Miller. And Counselor Bushy. All in favor. Posed, if any, that's carried as well. Is there any other business for Board of Health today? There's been a lot of efforts on the measles lately, so I'm sure Dr. Duick's been busy. Thank you, Dr. Duick. Item number 12, Correspondence. We have one item to receive and file, a proposal from Environmental Registry of Ontario regarding the removal of environmental assessment requirements for York One Waste Disposal Site Project through the proposed Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act. Counselor Broad, please.
Yes, thanks, Warden. I would like to remove this from the receive and file. I think we need to get behind this project 100%. Just a little update to myself, and I know Mayor Case, and I believe Jason was at the meeting the other night at Dresden. Our wonderful premier has decided that there was going to be an environmental assessment done, and now he's changed his mind. He's introducing this act called Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act. It's funny how you call it Protect Ontario, then you pull the EEA away. It doesn't make any sense to me. I think this county council needs to get behind this. There is, in New York's own information, 700 trucks going to come from somewhere every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So they could be running right by this facility right here. And I think county council needs to get behind this. I understand that I think Matt and Jason are preparing response to the ERO, but I think this county council, I would beg you to put- I would beg yous to please, let's make a motion, let's send it off to the premier, let's send it off to the Minister of Environment, let's send it off to Bob Bailey, let's send it off to Steve Pinzeno, that we 100% need that environmental assessment done on that piece of property. Thanks, Kevin.
You move that councillor Broad and seconded by councillor Case. Anybody wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Case?
Yes, Mr Warden. So being a community that has been involved with landfills for longer than we wish to admit sometimes, the EA process, as everybody knows here, is so crucial, so important when it comes to looking at developing a landfill site. We are currently in Warwick Township, about 50% through an EA for the Twin Creek site. And I, what happens, I don't know if everybody understands this, but what's, what happens when the EA process is removed? Public consultation trickles compared to what it does through a regular EA process. That goes from the municipality of Chatham Kent, but also the First Nations communities such as Walpole Island. So it's so important that this EA process takes place. The former Minister of Environment, Andrew Kenjan, is the one that put this EA process in place. We now have a new minister, Todd McCarthy. I'm actually meeting with Minister McCarthy on Friday in Toronto. Again, the EA process, when it comes to landfills, is such a crucial part of the whole piece of business around landfills and expansions and all those things. So I just want to say that I agree totally with Mayor Broad, and I think we really need to get behind this and support it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call a question?
Can we have the recorded vote at last, please?
Sure. Recorded vote requested by councillor Broad. And I turn to Ms Leger when she's ready. Councillor Hand, you surprised me.
I'm sorry. Could we have the motion read, please?
Sure. Ms Leger, please.
So motion moved by councillor Broad, seconded by councillor Case, that county council request that the EA for the York One Waste Disposal Site be required, and that this request be provided to the premier, MPP Pinzeno, MPP Bailey, and Minister of Environment. A recorded vote was requested by councillor Broad, and we're starting with deputy warden Agar. I have a yes. Councillor McEwan?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Bushy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Broad?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Case?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Cook?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Dennis?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Ferguson?
Yes.
I have a yes from councillor Ferguson. Councillor Hand?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Lucy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor McRoberts?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Miller?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Sageman?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Vean?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Warden Marriott?
Yes.
I have a yes. That motion passes.
Thank you. So moving on to item number 13, Information Reports. We have one item from Social Services regarding the St Bartholomew's Agreement of Purchase and Sale Update. Looking for a motion to receive and file, councillor?
I did.
Okay. Do you still move the motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second? Or councillor Cook, go ahead. Councillor McRoberts?
Thank you through the chair. Ms Colasanti, we've already spoken, and I forwarded an email in regards to this property. I understand, and being in Sarnia, that we have some folks that do not want certain builds in their neighborhoods. We do have indwell joining us, hopefully in the future. So my question would be, at this point, can you give us any type of information? If this will just be affordable housing or supportive, will we be pushing that? And I have a second question after that, if I could.
Okay, go ahead, Ms Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to councillor McRoberts. So right now, the property is under demolition. And after that, we will be doing, I believe actually the RFP will go out today for architectural services. Through that, we have to do a zoning process. And we are looking at affordable housing. It may be mixed housing with supportive in there as well, because as you said, we're working with indwell. It's just fairly early days. We really need to look at the zoning. We need to do community consultations. But absolutely, all of those, all of those things are on the table, and we're looking at them all right now, as we know it's very much needed in our community.
Follow-up councillor McRoberts?
Thank you through the chair. I would like to reference the motion that county council approved by councillor Bradley and White, that the county council publicly endorse a making affordable housing and shelter the number one priority in county council, either making a new motion or edit that to include supportive housing. Because we have folks that that is a priority for them, and we have a lot of complaints about the folks that truly need that help. If they're not technically on the priority list, then that is an issue. So if we could maybe change that motion or create a new one, whatever legal believes, and then maybe going forward, I would like to give a notice of motion that I request we make a certain percentage of any indwell supportive or housing that they will support to be a percentage of supporting housing.
Okay, do we have a second? Councillor Cook?
We've got a motion on the table. Maybe do the receiving file, add that as a separate motion.
Oh, yeah. We, sorry, we do already have a motion on the floor to receive and file. So we'll deal with that first. So we would...
Separate motion.
Yeah, it's a separate motion. So if you could just hold. Councillor Dennis?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I too have been contacted by a number of the neighbors of St Bart's. And, and they, they are looking forward to the community input. I've passed along every email that I've received to Ms Calacetti, to you, Warden Marriott, to Stephane Defoe, and I think I even copied the council here too as well. There is great concern what's going to be, planned to be built on that particular piece of property. And I, the affordable housing that's built behind that building seems to have worked well. I, I can tell you that if, if, I, I think that there's an appetite for affordable housing. But I think that if you get into the supportive housing in that particular neighborhood, you'll probably have more trouble than you would at the Laurel Lee location. That is a very, very prime north-end location around some very nice, nice homes near the lake, near Cannatarra Park. That is one heck of a fight you don't want to get into with those neighbors.
Okay, councillor McRoberts, you want to speak to this?
I would. Thank you through the chair. I think we can all be honest that there is not a single section of any community that's going to say, bring it on. So these are members of our community, everybody. If we just take a small bite of it and help these folks along and learn to be open and transparent about everything, that's the only solution. Otherwise, these folks have nowhere to be but on the streets. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor to receive and file, we can deal with councillor Dennis.
Again, that's easier said than done. Maybe that happens in very fantasy land, but not in the real world.
Thank you. So motion from the first to receive and file, then we'll deal with councillor McRoberts. Motion after that, all in favor. Opposed, that's carried. Go ahead councillor McRoberts. Again, please.
I would, should it be an edit or creating a new motion? New motion?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that county council publicly endorse making affordable and supportive housing and shelter the number one priority of county council.
Do we have a second? Councillor Cook? Discussion? Councillor McRoberts?
I would just like to follow up with my last comment. Everyone is upset that these folks that truly need it, that are on either ODSP or they've just lost their way, they do need the help. And if we do not put them into a facility being housing with support, we can never expect it to be anything but growing and worse. So this, if we have a group that actually have experience looking after this, that's the way we need to move forward with it. That's the only option we have at this point. Thank you.
Councillor Dennis?
Thank you. The Canadian dream isn't a handout. There's nothing wrong with getting people back on their feet, but get them back into society, get them back into being productive members of society, and that's not what we're doing, unfortunately. The Canadian dream isn't a handout, and I will not be supporting this.
Okay, councillor McRoberts, one last comment, please.
Thank you. I'm just curious, councillor Dennis, did you watch the indwell documentary?
I did not watch that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the question on the motion. Oh, sorry, councillor Case?
Recorded vote, Warden.
Okay, noted. Ms Leger, please. And we'll see what the randomizer says.
So we have a recorded vote requested by councillor Case, starting with councillor Dennis.
No.
I have a no. Councillor Ferguson?
Yes.
I have a yes from councillor Ferguson. Councillor Hand?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Lucy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor McRoberts?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Miller?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Sageman?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Vean?
No.
I have a no. Councillor White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Deputy Warden Agar?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor McEwan?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Bushy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Broad?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Case?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Cook?
Yes.
I have a yes. Warden Marriott?
Yes.
I have a yes. That motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item number 16, Committee Minutes. Oh, sorry. Two strikes and I'm out. Item number 14, items not requiring a motion. We have five sets of minutes to receive and file. Councillor Broad moves, and councillor McRoberts seconds. All in favor. That be carried. Number 15, reports requiring a motion. The report regarding the childcare facility development. So move, looking for a motion to approve the recommendation. Councillor Lucy moves, and councillor McRoberts seconds. Any discussion? Councillor Lucy.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I think this is good news for the county of Lampton. I just want to thank all the staff involved in obtaining this and moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Now look to item 16, Committee Minutes. Motion number one, under Infrastructure and Development Services Division, reports from the Infrastructure and Development Services Division, receive and filed. Under Cultural Services, motion number two, on the Museums, Gallery and Archives Collection Management for January and February. Number three was a report from the Lampton County Library's Early Literacy Services. Number four was a report regarding the revised volunteer policy. Under Long-Term Care, number five was information regarding Small House Project Update. Under, number six, under Corporate Services Division, the letter from the Integrity Commissioner. And number seven, Finance, Facilities and Acquisitions, was a report, council remuneration and related expenses. And number eight was a report regarding the 2024 Year End Monitoring Report. Number nine was a report regarding the 2025 Tax Policy. And number 10, under Social Services Division, a report regarding affordable housing update. And number 11, 12, 13, and 14 were in camera. Look for a motion to receive and file these. Councillor Sageman, deputy warden Agar, all in favor. That's carried. There are no items tabled from previous meetings. Look for any Going once, going twice, no other business. I turn to Ms Leger for the notice of bylaws, please.
Thank you, Warden. It is moved by councillor Hand, seconded by councillor Lucy, that bylaws 12, 13, 14, and 15 of 2025, as circulated, be taken as read for a first and second time.
All in favor. That's carried.
It is moved by councillor Hand, seconded by councillor Lucy, that bylaws 12, 13, 14, and 15 of 2025, as circulated, be taken as read for a third and final time.
All in favor. That's carried. Thank you. Brings us to item number 20, Adjournment. The next meeting will be held Wednesday, June the 4th, 2025, with in-camera session to commence at 9:00 a.m. Motion to adjourn, please. Councillor Veen and councillor White, all in favor. That's carried. Please join me in O'Canada.